Okay, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. I'll stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? And she's getting at the list right now.
We have Dale Jeremiah in the audience, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, fellow councilmembers. My name is Dale Jeremiah, and I live at 7106 230th Street, southwest in Mount Lake Terrace. And I wanted to speak about our South County Fire Annex proposal. And I've given you a handout, changing an amendment to the last proposal in your packet, that we're going to change the words from "intends" to "to will", you know, reduce the property tax levy rate, levy. And whereas in the next paragraph, it does say you will review, you know, get rid of the EMS levy rate. And so what I wanted to also mention was, this is in packet, this is probably in your packet C, this document here with this map. And on the back page, it mentions the South County EMS rate is $1.22, or not the EMS rate, but the South County rate is $1.22, which that's going to go into effect. And what you're going to repeal, that is still going to be covered by all of this money here. And also, we don't know what the South County EMS rate is. We know ours is 25 cents a thousand, but we don't know what there is. So that's an unknown. So the importance of having this pass, and I'm in favor of it, that I would hope you would say, let's tell the voters in the voters pamphlet that we will not intend to, but intend to, or will repeal, you know, give back those taxes that you're going to collect or not collect them in this year. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, if you have any. But I'm hoping tonight, one of you will say, yeah, I'm going to make an amendment. And another one will say, second. And four of you will say, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any others?
If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to speak, please use your hand raised tool. Going once, going twice. That's the end of public comment.
Thank you. All right. So next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve consent calendar items A through D.
Second. We have a movement seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That has passed. And so next is a presentation by the Edmonds School District Foundation. And is, I think he's just setting up the PowerPoint.
And thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present about the foundation and the great work that we do in the Edmonds School District with our 20,444 kids that we serve district-wide. As you know, we are the largest school district in Snohomish County. We're the 10th largest in Washington State. We have 35 campuses across five different municipalities. And our district, our students speak over 130 different languages. We are quite diverse student body. And it's actually, it's a beautiful sight to see. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the foundation, our work. And you have with you a copy of our annual report from our fiscal year-end, June 30, 2022. And so I'm just going to give an overview of the foundation and our programs from this last year and what we're working on going forward. And there are a couple of videos, so I'm hoping that they play. But our mission is to support the district. We were founded by the district to serve the district and to bring in resources to fill in the gap where there are a lack of resources, both from federal funding as well as resources available for students. And so our job is to develop community partnerships and bridge sustainable funding in support of the district's mission to educate our children and our families in their pursuit of excellence. Our vision is that every student in our district has the resources to learn, thrive, and contribute to our vibrant community. We have, on average, about 43% of our students that participate in free and reduced lunch. And with, this is the wrong PowerPoint. And we can't use the thumb drive, can we? Can we use the thumb drive? Okay, that's all right. I'll run with it. This is, sorry. We had some technical difficulties in the district, and it's, I think I sent the wrong file by mistake. So I'm going to talk about our three pro- we have three program areas: academic enrichment, career and college readiness, and our Nursery Network Program, health and wellness. Academic enrichment is those elements that put kind of, you know, funds. We do classroom projects, school-wide projects, music programs. We send students to travel to national and international competitions. And that represents a smaller portion of our budget. We do reading programs, library and literacy. Literacy is significant because you want your students to learn how to read by the time they're in grade three. Students that don't learn reading proficiency by grade three, they always fall behind their peers. So academic enrichment is our smallest suite of programs that we fund. We, last year, funded about $127,000 in academic enrichment programs. Nursery Network is our largest suite of programs. It started as a weekend meal program to feed our homeless kids in the Edmonds School District. We currently have about 550 homeless kids in the Edmonds School District. And our meals program is a series of programs to feed our kids during out-of-school times. So during, so our weekend meal program, we, last year, sent home over 9,400 weekend meal kits to our kids. During the pandemic, we converted our service delivery model from delivering weekend meal kits to kids at school, to wherever they're sheltered in place. We set, operate seven pop-up pantries every month, year-round. And we serve about 300 to 350 families through our pop-up pantries. At the height of the pandemic, we were serving 475 kids per week and delivering to wherever they're sheltered in place. Today, we are still delivering weekend meal kits to wherever kids are sheltered or wherever they live. By doing that, it eliminated any kind of access barriers, any barrier whatsoever in terms of participation. And by doing that, we've seen where we have an increase of high school students that are participating in the program. They wouldn't participate in the past because they didn't want their friends to know. They didn't want to get the food at school. By delivering it at home, it eliminates any barrier whatsoever. And oftentimes, our high school students, if they're couch surfing, by providing a weekend meal kit, it allows them to have food that they can eat and not be as burdensome to their host family if they're couch surfing. And our weekend meal kits, if they're requested, we distribute hygiene kits and feminine hygiene kits. In our pop-up pantries, we also have family, you know, like toilet paper and paper towels and dish soap and toiletries. So we distribute those as well. Our pop-up pantries, we partner with all of our local food banks. So we provide shelf-stable items while our food banks provide the commodities that we don't carry, like milk and cheese and meat and eggs and fresh produce. With our Nursery Network Program, we have a network of church partners that work with us as well. And we have specific partners that are pantry partners. And they might bring rice and beans or tortillas or carrots and potatoes and bananas. So that, it's meant to feed our families during the third and fourth week of the month, in between their SNAP benefits, so that they have plenty of food to eat for that period of time. Our pop-up pantries eliminate access barriers to the food banks that don't always have accommodating hours. It also eliminates the stigma of participating at a food bank, which is an unintended consequence, but allows our families to come shop in privacy and receive the food and the things that they need for their household. Last year, we, through those two parts of our program, we distributed almost 90,000 pounds of food through our weekend meal kits and our summer meals kits. Last year, we brought back, I'm sorry, our summer meal kits and our pop-up pantry, our weekend meal kits and our pop-up pantries. Our summer meals are live and in person. They're like mini summer camps where our kids can come and play. They're served a meal. They play four days a week, eight weeks during the summertime. And last year, we served 5,700 summer meals to our students. One of our sites for our summer meals was Bicentennial Park. It was one of our most successful sites. Kids come and play. It's free to any child that wants to participate. And the most important part is that they get to have a meal. And they get to do kid things and kid activities. And, you know, these are kids that can't afford to go to the Y or the Boys and Girls Club. So making that available to our students during out-of-school times is really important. We also do emergency meals for families if they are escaping a situation or maybe they've had a house fire and they're in temporary housing. We will deliver emergency food staples to wherever they are sheltered. And then, this last Christmas holiday season, we delivered 300 boxes of food for the holiday meals. And Steve Woodard, Councilmember, Steve Woodard, helped to deliver the food. If you remember that week of before Christmas where we had the snowstorms and then the ice, deep freeze that hit. And Friday, the 23rd, was the day we were supposed to deliver our holiday meals to our families. We had 300 turkeys, 300 boxes of food. We had gifts, 500 gifts for our families that were going out to our kids. And with the deep freeze, we had to push back our delivery day. We had about 20 people that came out on the 23rd in the afternoon to pick up their route. And 36 people came out on Christmas Eve to deliver holiday meals and gifts to our families. They were so determined to get the weekend meal kits or the holiday kits out to our families, to make certain that they were going to have a beautiful holiday, that it was just a wonderful reminder of the beauty of the season, of coming together as a community to support one another, make certain that we were all taken care of. Also, in our Nursery Network Program, we do vision screenings for some of our students. We distribute coats. We do coat drives. And then, again, hygiene kits and feminine hygiene kits. And then, our next suite of programs, our career and college readiness. So that, this is another area where the foundation has continued to grow over the years. We have, our students that speak 130 different languages in the district can test proficient in their native language and earn world language credits for that. That allows a student to qualify to go to college, should they choose. That's a pathway that they want to go. But it's a college entrance requirement, and that satisfies that for students. Students who are enrolled in dual-credit courses at college and the high school courses, we provide stipends for students to convert their college, convert it from a high school credit to a college credit. And we really focus on students who are low-income. Our low-income students typically cannot afford to participate in more rigorous programs such as this. And by providing stipends for students that can't afford it, it levels the playing field so that they can participate. And again, gives them choices. Now, they're taking college-level courses in high school. Many of our students are working toward as close to an AA or certificate as they possibly can upon graduation. Scholarships is another area where we've grown exponentially this year. I think we're estimated to distribute somewhere between $160,000 in scholarships to our students to pursue post-secondary education. That could be vocational, two-year or four-year. A program that we're piloting this year is an on-the-job training program. That's a scholarship hybrid program. We're piloting it at Scriber Lake High School, our alternative high school, where approximately 43% of our students graduate on time. These are students that don't really think that they're going to go to college. They don't know what they're going to do or what life is going to look like for them after graduation. And the year prior, we recognized that we didn't receive one scholarship application from a Scriber Lake student. And so I met with the folks in the district in the CTE program, Mark Madison, to talk about what we can do to change that. And students at Scriber Lake, not just Scriber Lake, but all of our high schools. And we'll be rolling this out to Mount Lake Terrace High School, Lynnwood High School, and Edmonds Woodway. But they, we're targeting students that need to earn credits. They, these are kids that need to work in order to support themselves and help maybe support their family. The OJT program, the students are in the classroom. They have some classroom instruction. Really working with them on what is it you want to be and do when you grow up? What does life look like for you? What is your fondest dream that you could ever imagine? And also, as part of that, working on resume development, learning what it means to be a team player, punctuality, things that probably aren't being role modeled for them and would not come naturally learning in the classroom. Then, they are paired with an employer in a six-week paid internship that is also credit-bearing. So while they're working, they're earning credits toward graduation. And then, they're eligible for a $2,000 scholarship upon completion of the program. And so by applying to scholarships through the foundation, not only are they eligible for the OJT scholarship, but they're eligible for any scholarship that we offer. And this will be our first year of having students that will apply for both as part of the OJT program as well as students not part of the OJT program. In the OJT program, our fall pod of students, we had five that started, three that completed. And we have eight that are enrolled in the winter-spring pod. If they follow the same course, we'll have five to six that will complete the program, will be eligible for scholarships. Part of our summer meals program, two elements that we're working on, there are summer internships to work in our summer meals program along with the site leans. It requires energetic staff to keep up with the kids that are playing and having fun. And we think this is a way that can build the program. Another area that we're looking at in terms of OJT, we have a horticultural program and a culinary arts program. And so the students are, hopefully, the students in our horticultural program will plant produce that our culinary students will harvest and then prepare into meals for service at one of our summer meal sites. Everything that we do is in partnership with the Edmonds School District and at the request of the Edmonds School District. We work very close together in terms of strategic planning and aligning our programs with the district's strategic indicators and looking at ways that we can continue to fill in the gap for our students for their academic success. So that's basically my presentation without the PowerPoint. So I apologize that this was the wrong PowerPoint. But, and I had some great videos to share with you. But are there any questions I may answer for you?
Councilmember Sonmore?
I don't really have any questions, but I think you did great without the presentation. I was surprised how easily it rolled off your tongue and how compassionate you showed. So I think you did more justice than the videos did. So I just wanted to thank you because sometimes I forget about what all this means and how life has changed for so many children. And I look into my backyard and I can see the kids playing and how diverse they are and how different they are and how little time they get to spend outside as much as we used to when we were kids. But just having toiletry kits and toilet paper. And I think the one thing that you hit and kind of gave me the goosebumps, and I had to look away for a little bit, but is that I remember being a kid that didn't have a lot of money and got free lunch. And I didn't like going into the classrooms and using the free lunch. And just the fact that you bring the food to their homes is, it's very touching. And thank you for that.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Well, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. Can't say I'm surprised at the number of homeless students in the district. It's a shame. I'm wondering if you or the school district have information about many homeless students who reside or attend Mount Lake Terrace schools.
I didn't check that specific information, but I can research it and email. Yeah.
Thank you.
And get that information to you. Yeah.
Did you want to, are we allowed to talk about that here? I don't know.
I don't know. Are you allowed to talk? So I can. I probably can because I'm here, right? So we raise funds, right? And that's what we do. We bring in the bacon so that we can serve the bacon to our kids, right? And so we have a fundraising breakfast on Friday, I should know this by heart, March 27th or 24th at 7:00 a.m. I know Steve Woodard's hosting a table. So if you would like to join him or me at our tables, we'd love to have you. I promise my PowerPoint will work there. And so will our videos. So we'd love to have you join us. Yeah.
All right. But does anyone have anything to add? Well, I know we have your, that you've been here before. And it's always a good reminder that we have you out there. The kids are being taken care of. I know we can do more for them, but.
I have a question for you, if I may.
Go ahead.
May I? I, so Scott Hugel used to serve on our board, and he's our former city manager. And while he was here as city manager, we had talked about possible uses of your city's ARPA dollars. And I haven't heard anything about that. I was just curious what your thoughts are on that and if there might be alignment, particularly with our OJT program because of the workforce development component to it as well as high school students feeding into the workforce. But just want to get your thoughts about where you might be in that process and if nonprofits will be called to be invited to submit proposals.
We will be discussing ARPA dollars at a future meeting like this.
Okay.
We've just only skimmed it yet. We haven't gone a deep dive yet into what we're going to be doing.
Oh, I would appreciate an opportunity to present again if that were possible.
All right. Anyone else? I keep going, and I don't see anyone else raising their hand. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So next on our agenda is the discussion and approval of the resolution calling for a special election concerning annexation into South County Fire. And who's going to be doing that presentation? Stefan.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers. For the record, Stefan Clifton, Assistant City Manager. And before I begin,[1565.97] And before I begin, I would just like to respond to a comment and a question raised by Dale Jeremiah. He had a question about the EMS levy assessed by the Fire District, and that is .32 per thousand. So I thought I would just mention that before I forget as I go through my presentation. And then I believe the comment about will versus intent, I believe that relates to the resolution, which is in your packet. And I'll talk about that briefly near the end of my presentation.
All right, we have a comment, a question here.
One point of, thank you, Mayor. One point of clarification, Stefan, is that 32 cents?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And when I get to it, that is included in the amount that a homeowner would pay or someone with property would pay on an annual or monthly basis. So when I get to that, I'll briefly describe that. This is the document that Mr. Jeremiah was referring to and, oops, sorry about that. And on the last page, it talks about the, this is Exhibit C in your presentation, in your packet, but it talks about the amount of EMS levy. So Leslie Hines behind me with South County Fire actually contacted Bob Eastman with South County Fire, who was able to get us the response via texting. So we were able to get that to you right away. So what we have here is just a summation of the January 3rd, January 6th, February 12th, and 21st, 2023 presentation highlights. And I've talked about this before, but essentially what it's stating is that the city is at a crossroads. And the reason for that is that the 20-year interlocal agreement, otherwise known as a contract, expires at the end of 2024. The council really has two choices. Either annex into South County Fire, RFA, or contract with South County Fire. The contract would begin January 1 of 2025. The city will be paying parity or the same rate as other members of South County Fire. And what that means is the rates or the cost for the city would increase by over 81%. Right now, out of, out of our general fund, we're paying about $1.7 million. So to contract with South County Fire effective January 1, 2025, you're looking at at least $3 million more. So it takes quite a hit to the general fund. And so we do have to work out a new arrangement with South County Fire. And so in your packet is a memorandum and a number of attachments related to the potential annexation into the Fire District. I should note for the public who may not have been following this issue that on February 12th, Resolution 869 was approved by the City Council requesting annexation into South County Fire Regional Fire Authority. And city staff has been working diligently to bring you all the information that we hope you can digest in order to make a decision this evening. So the current situation is that the city currently pays for its service and contract with South County Fire using a portion of the city's general property tax levy and all of the EMS levy funds. And I'll describe those in just a moment. We also use transport fees and we also collect utility tax to help contribute revenue to pay for those services. Property owners currently pay the city of Mount Lake Terrace via the Snohomish County Assessor Property Taxes. So what you pay in your taxes is given to the city. The city then pays South County Fire. Transport fees, South County Fire actually submits those to the city, which in turn then remits those back to South County Fire. And I'll describe briefly how that will change if annexation is approved by the voters. And then also the utility taxes. And so at the bottom of the screen, you'll see an actual breakdown of funding sources used to cover those expenses. The voter-approved EMS levy generates in 2023, we're estimating $1,345,036. Transport fees, $421,873. Utility tax, $259,946. And the general fund, or a portion of the general fund, $1.744 million. And I've highlighted that in green because that is the amount that the council really has discretion in whether or not you want to reduce the levy rate and help to offset the increase for paying for fire if annexation occurs. So the total cost for year 2023 will be $3,000, $3,771,022. That does include expenses for LEF, medical benefits, SNOW 911, and supplies. So what does annexation into South County Fire Authority mean? If Mount Lake Terrace voters approve annexation, changes, it does change the way that property owners pay for fire and EMS services. Post-annexation, effective January 1, 2024, property owners, residential, multifamily, commercial, will pay directly to South County Fire as part of their annual property taxes. The city EMS levy would be eliminated. Transport fees would be paid directly to South County Fire, and the utility tax would no longer be used for fire and EMS. Regarding the city budget, the city will no longer be paying South County Fire for fire EMS services using general funds or the levy or the utility tax. And so what this would do is eventually it would help stabilize the city's property tax rates and move the city's budget towards longer-term stability. Regarding the breakdown, you saw the numbers earlier, but I did put in parentheses next to each one specifically what will happen so that those who might be looking at the slides either via the internet or online or on the website, you can actually see what's happening with each one of those line items. If annexed into South County Fire, what would Mount Lake Terrace property owners pay for fire and EMS services? A key, a key part of this, and I did mention this earlier, a key part of the annexation is a discussion, the city council is a discussion about whether the city council will help mitigate some of the impact of additional costs on city voters. And if so, by how much and for what purpose. The net effect on taxpayers is based on what the city council decides to do for year 2024 and beyond. There is a resolution in your packet which expresses an intent to reduce the general property tax levy, but there's not an amount referenced in the resolution because that all depends on what the council decides this evening. So this is a continuation of the earlier slide. In other words, what would property owners pay if annexation took place? And what we've done is we've provided a fairly detailed cryptic spreadsheet here for you. And the calculations are based on a $616,743 assessed value home, 2,000 square feet in size. So scenario one, you'll, you'll notice that there's $1,744,166 highlighted in green. That relates to the number that was referenced in the earlier two slides. And so if you were to reduce the rate per thousand and gave all of this money back to the residents, the property tax increase would be $318, plus there is a benefit charge for a total of $388.70 for, or $32.39 per month. And I'm going to take a moment just to talk about the benefit charge. You'll note in the lower left-hand corner, the benefit charge changes by the size of your home. So if you look at the benefit charge column, let's say the home under scenario one is a 1,000-square-foot home. That $70.46 would be replaced with $49.82. And so the amount would really go up to about $30 less, $20 less. So about 368. So that would reduce the monthly rate to about 31 something. I also looked at a 3,000-square-foot home and under the scenario one, it increases the monthly rate by just a dollar and a half. So all you do is simply take the benefit charge based on your square footage and insert it into the benefit charge column, and then that affects the monthly and the yearly charges. So under scenario two, this is where you might give, let me back up a bit. In the last presentation, I presented scenarios one, two, and three. So scenario one, 2B, and three is what we presented last time. But we've, based on last week's conversations, we inserted a line between one and 2B. And so $1,744,000 equates to about .33 per assess, per thousand assessed valuation. The $1,023,960 back to the resident equates to about 19 cents per thousand assessed valuation. What's that? You have a question? What's that?
He just wants you to repeat it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
He's closing his voice a little bit.
Your phone on. Yes, I will, I will certainly repeat the, the question, the numbers. So under scenario one, the 1.7 million, I'm going to round here. That was presented during the last meeting. 2B, the 1 million rounded, that was also presented. And scenario three, no money back to residents. So what we've done is we've inserted a new line item, the 1.386 million, just to kind of show you, maybe give you a broader range to, to look at and consider. So the 1,744,000, that equates to about 33 cents per thousand assessed value. The 2B, which I presented last time, 1,023,960, that equates to approximately 19 cents per thousand assessed valuation. And scenario two is just splitting the difference. So it's about 20, it's about 26 cents per thousand. And so that would, you could return 1.386 million. And then you can see the monthly charges, 32, 35, $39.49 per month, depending on any one of these four. But the council can certainly choose to create their own scenario, their own option as well. But this, this can give you some ideas about what these numbers equate to. So I hope that helps. So what happens if annexation is not approved? I did talk about this earlier.
We do have someone who was asked.
Okay.
Thank you, Stefan. Could we go back to the slide we were just looking at? So I guess as we are thinking about having to kind of explain a potential decision to voters, can, I guess, can you walk through, obviously, scenario one is all, scenario three is none. But I guess scenario two and 2B, are there, how did we get to those specific numbers?
Okay, yeah, let me back up even further because this is, this earlier slide that I presented where I talked about the general fund, the $1,744,000 amount, that's only a portion of our general fund that we use to pay the fire service. Not all of our, not all of our general fund money. We use these other funding sources as well. It's just that if we annex, the EMS levy goes away and that goes to the Fire District. The transport fees go directly to South County Fire, and so we won't be dealing with that item anymore. And then the utility taxes, we don't need those for this purpose. So your discretion here relates to the, the general fund portion used to pay our 2023 fire contract.
Thank you. And I guess to kind of build off of that, so there's two, two additional options. So option one would be to refund all of that portion of the general fund that we're currently collecting. Scenario three is not returning any of the, that, those funds. But I guess in scenario two and 2Bs, for those of us who weren't involved in the development of those numbers, was there a specific reason that we landed on those two, those two specific numbers?
No, no real reason. We wanted to just provide some approximation so that you can have an idea of what certain dollar amounts mean when it translates to a yearly or a monthly expenditure for a homeowner. So we, we said, okay, if we give it all back, that's 1.744 million. Scenario 2B, that was 19 cents per thousand. And because the RFA committee said, can you look at a, what it means if someone were to pay $40? And so that, that's where 39.33 comes from, scenario 2B. So that's why we brought it forward before. And then for tonight's presentation, we inserted another dollar amount to show you that 35.86 is giving back $1,386,000. So it's just to help you have a better comparison of a bunch of different scenarios.
Thank you.
So the contract cost, if we don't annex, as I mentioned before, and the mayor and Mayor Protem mentioned this last time, the council really has two options because we explored creating our own fire department again, which is cost prohibitive. We talked about working with other cities and possibly creating and merging with them. But Briar is voting on annexation April 25th. Mill Creek voted to annex by a 76% approval margin last year into South County Fire. And Linwood is already a part of South County Fire. And Edmonds, their contract doesn't expire until 2030. So they still have another seven years before their contract expires. So the two options available for the council is to enter into new contract, January 1, 2025, and that's where it's going to cost at least 81%, if not more than, than it does today. Actually, today, if we were paying parity, it would be 80%, 81% or more. So by 2025, it'll, that number will only grow. And then as far as future increases in property tax levies or cut and service programs, if we were a part of the district today and paying what everyone else is paying, the council would have to look at, you know, addressing tax levies and addressing impacts of services, projects, or programs. So in order to, in order to hold an election on April 25th, there's a number of resolutions that are before the city council. The first one is calling for a special election, and that's attachment A in your council packet. And for the audience, whether in this room or online, what I did is I took the ballot measure right out of the, the resolution. I put it on the slide here. The ballots have to be very simple. They have to be one-topic ballot measures. And this is almost identical to what Mill Creek had last year. And the, and Snohomish County Elections will send this down to the Attorney General's office to make sure that the ballot measure is okay. We're assuming it will be because it's almost identical to what Mill Creek used last year. And they sent theirs to Snohomish County Elections before it was all approved as well. But essentially, it is, Mount Lake Terrace seeks voter approval to annex into South Snohomish County Fire Rescue Regional Fire Authority. That's the short title. And then the ballot title is, shall the city of Mount Lake Terrace be annexed into and be a part of the South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority effective August 1, 2023, per Mount Lake Terrace City Council Resolution? And the resolution is not identified yet because when the council, if the council approves the resolution, the city clerk then will assign a number and will, will insert it into this resolution before it's signed. And then for the voter, it's a simple yes or no. And then also, we are requesting as a part of this resolution that a local voter's pamphlet, you know, be prepared and a language for the explanatory statement. The explanatory statement is actually included and is part of the resolution. And it's almost identical as well to the city of Mill Creek, only our numbers are different. So that's something for the council to consider this evening. Then we have another resolution. That's attachment B, as referenced in the memorandum, and that was in the February 16th and tonight's council packet. The first item is the RFA plan as amended and restated for the South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority. Right now, the plan has a number of jurisdictions that are referenced within the plan. So if Briar says yes, the plan has to be amended to include Briar, the city of Briar, within the Regional Fire Authority. And if the voters of Mount Lake Terrace say yes, then Mount Lake Terrace is also included in that new plan. So that's what we mean by amended. And it also has some terms in it as well, which I'll highlight at the end of my presentation. There's also a pre-annexation agreement, and the purpose there is to help implement the RFA plan to ensure a smooth and seamless transition of services and responsibilities from the city to South County Fire. And the agreement that specifically applies in this instance is a use agreement. That's Exhibit One of Attachment B or the pre-annexation agreement. And that establishes the terms by which South County Fire will exclusively use portions of Station 19 while maintaining use of the ground floor by the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And then Mount Lake Terrace Resolution, again, this, this number is not referenced. That'll be assigned. But it's expressing intent to reduce property taxes by whatever the council decides this evening.
Sorry, Stefan, we were just having a sidebar because our presentation doesn't match your presentation.
Oh, that is because, that is because, and this happened minutes before, I noticed that the MLT resolution, hashtag, 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 expressing intent, wasn't in the slideshow. I caught that, I went upstairs, I quickly changed it. So Jennifer will repost. And then pro-con committees, we did issue three notices requesting interested residents to participate on either a pro committee or a con committee. And those will need to be appointed this evening. And we have a memorandum in front of you that includes the names of individuals who have requested to be on the pro committee and the con committee. And then once you appoint those individuals, we will send those up to Snohomish County Elections right away. Do we have more questions or?
Do, do we pick one for each or?
You can have a maximum of three.
Oh, okay, because I said.
Only one person has applied to be on the con committee. Three people have applied to be on the pro committee. But you are allowed to actually have help in preparing those statements. So those, those committees are actually able to have some help on those statements.
Do we have any, anyone with questions on this? So we're going to pick this tonight, right?
Yeah, yes. And then lastly, the last slide really relates to the terms of the pre-annexation agreement and also the amended RFA plans. I did discuss these last Thursday, so in the interest of time, I'll just leave it on the screen and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Is this where we're going to respond to Mr. Jeremiah?
What's that?
At the next. Oh, okay. All right. Now do I have to open up my?
One thing I should note, that the resolution expressing an intent to reduce the levy, eliminate our, the EMS levy, those are referenced in the resolution. But again, they don't have a, there's no dollar amount reference. That will be inserted based on a decision by the city council this evening.
Okay, so, number one, we're to appoint a pro-con committee with a voter's pamphlet. Am I looking at the right?
Is it the city bill?
The first resolution, Mayor, would be the one calling for an election, and then, that would be followed by the resolution approving the RFA plan, the pre-annexation use agreement, and then, the last one would be the resolution expressing an intent to reduce, and I think that's probably where the council will have most of their discussion related to that last resolution.
Right, Mayor Protem.
Can I just ask, is that on our council bill, or do you have something different?
I was looking for it.
You're doing, so this is the one she's talking about?
Yeah, the council bill should have at the top. It should have the resolutions referenced.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will start by, with the first resolution, I move to, sorry, move to approve the resolution for the City of Mount Lake Terrace, calling for an April 25th, 2023 special election concerning annexation into the South County, South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority.
Right here.
Second?
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? Does anyone have anything?
I'll just make a.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've spent a lot of time now talking about this issue, and I think we all recognize the importance of at least letting, putting this in front of our voters, our residents, and making, being able to make a decision about annexing into the fire district. We're going to spend a little more time talking about some other portion, pieces of this, but this is, it is critical for our residents to weigh in on this important decision based on our own city's financial health and stability and ensuring fire and EMS services for our residents, and so, I wholeheartedly encourage us to adopt this resolution.
Anyone else? Councilmember Sonmore?
I guess I want to say to the residents, it is kind of confusing, but we're allowing you to have the vote. You can choose to pay higher fire, or you can stabilize it a little bit with paying it through your, and I brought my property taxes because I was looking at how different it would be and what it would look like on our property taxes, and Stephen, you did a good job of explaining that because that will be something that they'll see, and it will say the RFA and the fire here, and then, it will show how it reduces, but it really, I was trying to look at it to see if I'd understand how it would reduce the City of Mount Lake Terrace contribution, and it would be kind of hard to see that unless you were paying attention to what you're voting on. So, we're not having you vote on something that is detrimental to you. It's something that is in your favor, and you have control over this vote. You can choose to have the city spend more of your money towards fire, or you can have the city and yourselves on your property taxes choose to spend less on your fire. So, it looks a little bit deceiving sometimes when you have to go out to a vote, but this vote is something that we feel that will benefit all of our citizens.
Anyone else?
No, 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 I think you did a good job. I was just following up with what you were saying.
Shall we just call for the vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve a resolution for the City of Mount Lake Terrace, calling for the approval of the following attachments amended and restated plan for South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire and pre-annexation inter-local agreement between South County Fire and City of Mount Lake Terrace Authority, including exhibit one for the use agreement and South County Fire for Fire Station 19 use agreement.
Second.
Oh, was that a second? I barely heard it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded? Do we have any discussions? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having had a chance to tour our facilities, our Fire Station 19, and understand sort of how the structure is built to accommodate, you know, fire engines and other vehicles and staff out into the future, I think it's important for residents to understand that the fire station is, you know, accommodating of this, you know, new level of service that we will be, that we as residents of the city will be receiving, and it seems as though this is a good time to mention this because I think one of the elements of this annexation decision that will be on the ballot that might get lost in the weeds or the details is actually an increased level of service for the city. So, I just want to take this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
Can I just ask a question too? So, if I'm looking at my.
Did you have?
Real estate taxes. On the back, there's actually South County Regional Fire Authority and a phone number and an email address. When somebody calls that, does the fire district explain what they're paying for for their taxes? Is there something that's?
Mayor, council, that's specific for the benefit charge. And so, the way that, the way the county does that is the benefit charge is established by the Board of Commissioners, not from the county assessor. So, when we calculate the benefit charge, we submit that to the county. The county validates it or verifies it and then submits it, and so, if there's any concerns or questions specific to the benefit charge, that number and email comes right to one of us at the Fire Authority to answer those questions specifically, so it's specific to the benefit charge.
Perfect, thank you. And one of the other things that I know all of us really want to point out too, senior citizens and disabled persons may qualify for an exemption or deferral on taxes and for qualifying information, contact Snohomish County Assessor, and then, there's a phone number on the back. So, when you are looking at your taxes, there are contacts to ask about what you're paying for, and so, I just wanted to point that out. So, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands going up. Shall we call for a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, okay, so we're going to, this is going to be a little more complicated. We're going to start with putting a motion on the table, then we can discuss amending it. So, I will move to approve a resolution to reduce a portion of the general property tax levy used to pay fire and EMS services in 2024 and eliminate the EMS levy in 2024 should a majority of voters approve annexation into the South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority in April, in the April 25th, 2023 special election.
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded? Discussion? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to amend the resolution in section two to read, in the event that the proposition to have the city annexed into South County Fire is approved by the voters in April 25th, 2023 special election, the city council will reduce the general property tax levy by 33 cents per 1,000 assessed value in 2024.
A councilmember Sonmore?
Yeah, I was going to explain it if there's a second.
Be a second, because I want to hear more.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So, the amendment that I, and obviously, this is the part where we need to have a full agreement, I guess, for everybody as to what their intent is. I've made my intent clear as of last Thursday night that I believe it is important for us to, to reduce the amount of property taxes paid by our residents, the full amount of the fire services that we're paying for. I think that it is important that we do so because I want to, as I mentioned before, I think it is critical that we pass, that we annex into the fire district. It is critical for the financial health and stability of our, of providing our fire services to our residents. It will increase, ensure fire and emergency services for our residents and in fact, increase those services. So, this is really important that we get it, that we, that we, I believe that we pass this as a community and annex into the fire district. I don't want to take any chances. I want to make sure that our residents are comfortable and are supportive of making this move, and I think the best way to do that is to ensure that there is the least amount of impact to their pocketbooks. This is, it is going to be a, you would think it would be a tough, it would be an easy sell based on what information we have. The information we have and what we understand is that these, the costs of providing fire services to the city is going to escalate dramatically, and it will cripple our city if we have to continue paying those increased rates. We can't afford it as a city. We need to be able to turn these services over to a fire district that knows what they're doing and how to provide these services and allow our community and our residents to work directly and have, provide, have those services provided by the fire district. If we don't pass this, we're going to find ourselves in a world of hurt. We can't afford it. We can't take that risk of not passing this. For the average voter, however, they're not seeing all of this information. They're not going to put all the different pieces together. Elections, especially tax issues, are soundbites, and we have a very difficult challenge in front of us ensuring that we get their vote. And the best way to do that is to provide as much relief as we possibly can to, to help them make up their minds. Yes, I would love to have additional money. This is a great opportunity. We have a lot of needs, a lot of things we need to do and want to do in this city. We have big dreams, and they're going to cost money, and this is a great way to help pay for those dreams. But we aren't going to have the ability to do anything if we fail. If this measure goes down, we won't have, not only will we not be able to pay for those big dreams that we have, but we're going to have to cut back dramatically on the services we're currently providing. So, I would encourage us to give back those as much as we can, reduce the impact to our voters, and adopt a 33 cent per thousand assessed value reduction as we move forward.
Is that a, go ahead, councilmember. Oh, councilmember Ryan?
A clarification question. Is that on the amendment, the amount, is that the scenario one as listed in the presentation?
That is my understanding, Stephen, that it is 33 cents per thousand assessed value would be scenario one. Is that correct?
Yeah, in talking with our finance director, we, we talked about putting the amount in the resolution, but not necessarily the .33 because it's kind of rounded, the exact amount, what 1.744 equates to, little bit below, a little bit above, but somewhere around .33.
Yeah, sorry, that was the wording that I saw in the, in the presentation, so that's what I was trying to go by, but that is the intent, that's scenario one.
And one more, if I may.
Go ahead.
Then, I'm, it makes sense to put the amount in this bill and/or amendment, but do we have to do the amount tonight, or can that be discussed later? Are we going to do it all tonight?
The ballot goes to Snohomish County without a dollar amount referenced, although the explanatory statement, you would want to, I forgot what that explanatory statement says in it, but does it? Do you have that available? I can call it up. Does it reference an amount? Yeah, so we should do that because we need to send that to the county right away, along with the names of the pro and con committee tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
So, then, how do we do this? We're not going to take scenario one, two?
Is it, we have some more discussion for a minute?
Yes, councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor, and I may need some process guidance here. I would like to make a similar but distinct proposal from that, that councilmember Wall just, just made. Is this appropriate time to speak to, to this concept? Okay, well, I'll just go from there. Thank you, Madam Mayor, again. I just would like to say that I'm very supportive of everything that councilmember Wall just spoke to. However, this is a real sort of turning point for, you know, governance in the city and for the services that our residents will, will be able to access. It's also an opportunity for us to think about the opportunity to sort of, you know, treat our neighbors equitably, and I would like to propose that instead of the full scenario one, $1,744,000 figure, $50,000 of that figure be set aside into an account that would provide utility discounts and that, that residents could apply to along the lines of the eligibility standards in the LIHEAP Energy Assistance Program. You know, we've, we've heard from residents that, you know, they, that many who are, they're housing insecure or struggle to make ends meet, don't have a good outlet for their increased utility costs. We currently have a, I believe, ARPA Fund-funded COVID-19-related assistance account, but going forward, expect that to, to go away. And so, I think a $50,000 amount, a count on an annual basis, you know, that's income qualified, and I could, you know, speak to the LIHEAP income qualification parameters, but it's, it's a fairly high bar in terms of the amount that folks need to earn. I think a single resident household has a roughly $20,000 annual income threshold to qualify for, for, you know, energy assistance, that is, heating and electricity assistance. Most municipal utilities of our size do not have water assistance accounts, and I, you know, at the end of the day, we'll, we'll absolutely be supporting councilmember Wall's proposal, but I would offer this for our consideration so that a scenario 1.1 be, you know, $1,694,000 amount go back to residents while we take care of, of, you know, the, the sort of economically vulnerable amongst our, our community, and I hope this, you know, this would show up as a very minor differential on folks' property tax bills or their, their rent, and I would, you know, commend the concept to you. And I also realize that this kind of, in a way, dovetails into the conversation we're having about staffing up our, our utility billing, staffing, not having spoke with the, with the city manager or staff, realize that there might be other logistics here, but I do want to, for, for residents, know that, you know, because there is a strong nexus here, we are collecting utility tax. I think it's a way to do right by our, our neighbors in need while we also increase fire service, fire and EMS service. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan? Councilmember Ryan, oh, and then Sonmore.
Thank you. The general, the EMS levy, as soon as we, if this gets approved, will no longer be, we won't be doing that any longer. Is that correct?
For the
So when, if everybody, if our citizens vote for this RFA, then we'll be eliminating the EMS levy. Okay, so then what, and then the utility discounts, is that just our city does that or does they, could they get into PUD or the water?
It, it depends on what the council decides. I, I don't want to speak for councilmember Payne Donovan, but
Currently, what is it?
His intent is.
Currently, what is it? They apply and isn't, is it just once a year? There's a time limit, isn't there? They have a once a year window to apply?
Yeah, Janella is on the line here, our finance director, and she might be able to help you with this. We do have, and the council contributed $500,000 to Volunteers of America specifically to help residents with utility assistance. I am aware of that. Janella, can you describe the other items?
Yeah, so the money from the BOA, can you all hear me?
A little fuzzy.
Yeah. There's an echo.
Okay. Let me try and make my sound better. So the UTO, the BOA contribute, we gave them 500,000 and out of that they paid for 75% of a residence outstanding bill that they have. I think it's over a certain amount of days. Also, there are different discount programs and those can be found online on the city website. I don't have it off the top of my head, the discount programs, but I will look right now.
The question then, the question is, for our citizens to apply, I think when I read it, wasn't there a, a window to apply and then for that year? And after that, there's no, you can't apply. So I just can't go in and any month apply. There's a certain window for applying for this discount. Is that correct?
Do you mean the one for the BOA? Or any discount?
No, this particular utility discount.
Um, let me look in that. Can I look online?
Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm sorry, if I can maybe, I think I understand the question, which is there, there's, there are exemptions that citizens can apply for, for low-income seniors, et cetera, and, and that is correct. There is a, a certain timeframe each year that they need to apply.
And when is that?
And I don't remember the date.
That's the question. When is that timeline? Thank you.
I'm trying to look it up.
I thought it was like.
Okay, I have it right here online.
Thank you.
It says, so there's a 30% fee reduction? If that's the question you're asking about? They can qualify for a 30% discount on water, sewer, and storm on, for low-income properties and let me pull up the says. It's for qualified, um, this one is for qualified seniors, 62 years or older or diso, disabled homeowners who reside at the service address. And I think it is for the year. So each year they reapply.
And we just upped that, uh, income limit recently.
Okay, so they apply for the year. So when is the application time? When, when is that? Is it in January? Do they apply in December or is it any month they want to?
I think it's any month that they want to and they use a copy of their current tax returns with all of their schedules. So for this time it would be, if they wanted to do it for 2023, they would provide their 2020. So this application I see that is online. Discount period, May 1, 2022 through April 30th, 2023. Deadline to maintain existing discount is April 30th, 2022.
So there is a timeline there. April 30th is the deadline.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I think just to try and help provide clarity, you know, there's, so there's the, the property tax exemption that low-income and seniors can apply for to help reduce their property tax burden. So that's, that's one piece of it. And, and yeah, so they, and they need to apply by a certain date for their property taxes for that, that year. However, the, what councilmember Payne Donovan has introduced is a separate and different from that exemption, that it, what, what councilmember Donovan, Payne Donovan is suggesting is, and, and so just to get back to the Volunteers of America, the $500,000 that we were using in ARPA dollars, that was a one-time assistance that we are providing to those that were in need. Councilmember Payne Donovan is suggesting that we set aside a portion of our property taxes ongoing to provide additional assistance into the future for paying utilities. So
Correct, and this was, I envisioned this as being specific to our drinking water and, and sewer, stormwater utility here, here in town.
Yeah, okay.
There, for other utilities, you know, whether it's your PSE gas or your Snowpud Power, there are, are other avenues for, for those customers.
So it's just ensuring that we are able to continue providing assistance to those in need for paying utilities, just to set aside of our property, future property tax collections. So that's, that's
You've reflected my, my intent. Well, thank you.
Great, thank you. And so then I guess the question then would be for for Stefan or Andrew or anybody that can answer it is how would we go about doing that in this resolution?
If the intent is to take 50,000 off scenario one, that would be 1,694,166. And I would have to work with the finance director to see what that equates to as far as cents per thousand. And we could do that tomorrow morning and include that in the resolution based on providing us a dollar amount this evening. I need to confirm with Janella that I'm making sense. Is that how it could be done, Janella?
Yes, and would that be ongoing 50,000 for the rest of time? Is that how the resolution would go? Or is that a one-time?
No, it's not a one-time.
I intend for this to be ongoing, yes.
And if I may,
Go ahead.
Suggest that, you know, rather than provide that, all those details in the, the resolution, I would, I, that will be our intent. But what we're just looking for is a dollar amount for the resolution itself. So in other words, take scenario one minus 50,000 or plus 50,000 or whatever the, the correct way to go about that would be. And that's, so that, that gets you your, you know, assessed value discount. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Janella, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we have the dollar amount of 1,744 minus 50, we would have 1,600 and some. And we could run numbers tomorrow morning and figure out what that equates to in point whatever per thousand.
Yes, we can try and get that.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll go back. I'm gonna address this and then go back to what I originally was gonna talk about. But for financial assistance, just to make sure, you can click on utility billing assistance from Volunteers of America of Western Washington and they're he, there to help. And also we have a 30% fee reduction. That's in our municipal code 1305 dot 375. That was amended on 2021. So Mount Lake Terrace, property owners over the age of 62, living on property in a household of aggregated income and that they'll qualify for a 30% discount on water, sewer, and stormwater. And then we also do have another program that can reduce your garbage. And so we do have that already in place, but I just wanted to point that out just to summarize that. But we did as RFA committee, look at what would happen if we did scenario three. And Rick had asked councilman Ryan about what other cities are doing. Linwood took, Linwood did scenario three. As far as I know, Ryer's gonna do scenario three. And I'll just go back to some just basic philosophy, and I know it's hard to swallow, but I'll say it anyhow, is most cities do not get revenue streams. So you're not going to ever find another revenue stream to bring in money. And we did a scenario on that because we wanted to know how that would play out because our budget does not look good in 2028. And we know our budget is going down. If we did scenario three, we would have almost, I believe it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, nine million extra dollars. And that would be something that would benefit our city and we could put that towards roads. We could put that through helping citizens with bills. We could help with getting a new pavilion. If we did ever want to go out for a pavilion, we'd have to go out to the voters and probably vote that in. So basically you're kind of taking that off the table. And we do have needs. And Rick said how it was fair to other cities. So that's where your disparity comes in. We're trying to figure out what is best for our citizens. The other thing is looking at the lift of property tax caps that's coming out to citizens. I don't know where the bill is right now at the moment, but that would lift our capability of increasing property caps with inflation up to 3% for the population growth factor. And so it, it, it all kind of goes to where is that middle? The middle is always gonna be constantly changing because everything is gonna be going up. The governor just told us that we'll need 1 million new housing, I think, and he said in the next 10, 20 years at the conference we went to, and half of those will be low-income. And so I don't think we're, it's, it's almost impossible to reach all these goals that we want to. But I think what our citizens should know is we're trying to do what's fair to all of our citizens. And thank you Jeremiah for bringing in your feedback because we always loved hearing from feedback from our citizens. And this is where it's gonna get really hard because not, we don't want to overtax our citizens. We don't want to, you know, take the extra amount of money. People are already thinking that we're taking their money for sewer and water. But guess what? Every six years we have to go out and look at that and re, since our city's older, we have to look at new water mains. The cost of doing new water mains is huge. And so do we take this extra money from our citizens and invest it well? Or do we in the future look at levy lid lift to our tax, property tax cap that goes up a couple percent? So that's what we're down to is figuring out how much money our city needs and looking at this revenue stream very holistically and understanding what it means to our city. So I'm throwing that out there so we have it on the table that citizens do know that we're comparing what they have to pay for the basic fire services or what would they would pay with scenario three and the higher amount of cost that would be, that would be invested back into the city. So I wanted to put that out there so it was very clear with the understanding of what we're looking at tonight because sometimes you hear us talking and you may not understand what that means. But I want to make sure that people don't think that we're gifting money. We're not doing that because cities aren't allowed to do that. But maybe if we take that certain amount of money and we really decide at another time how, what that would go for, maybe just not limiting it to one item, just limiting it to monies that the city could take in and look at to see what we could do the best with it. Of course, all of us want to help our citizens as much as we can with items that are on the table. And if this goes on forever, maybe things down in 10 years from now might change. And that $50,000 might go somewhere else. I just would like us to talk about why $50,000 and how many people that would help and what would be the cap? So we'd have to create the whole scenario, you know, do, do we help, you know, so many people per month with $50 on a utility? Or is it first come, first served and after that $50,000 is gone, it's gone? That's something I think we can look at a little bit later, but I'd just like to have a little bit more discussion around the scenarios and what they mean because now we're looking at scenario four. And we really hadn't talked about that. And so maybe we could have some more dialogues on the scenarios.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, mayor. And thank you to all of my colleagues for the, the interesting and insightful, I think, conversation about where, where we are. And I think it speaks to the complexity of this. And I, I think that is one of the things that has really been on my mind as I try to fully understand what's before us. And then I think about the conversations that we will need to have with our friends and neighbors in the come, if, you know, assuming that we move forward with this, you know, what, what that looks like and what that conversation looks like as we try to explain something that we've been talking about for five meetings now in a way that is digestible for, for folks who are not going to spend five evenings, you know, studying this issue and the depth that we have. And so I, I think from that perspective, I, I very much, I know I asked a lot of questions around scenario number three because to, to councilmember Sonmore's point, there, we have a lot of things that we really, we want to do for our community. Our residents tell us they want us to do for the community and that it's very enticing to think about that we could actually move forward on some of those goals. And I think those are goals that we need to have real conversations about how we, how we find revenue for that and, and not just 10 or 20 or 30 years down the line, you know, but, but actually make movement on some of those things. And I think that maybe this is not the moment, from my perspective at least, to do that because I think it creates a lot of confusion. And candidly, given the timeline that we have, I, I think it's really hard to get to a place where we have alignment on what, where those funds would go. I think we all have different ideas and I think we've seen the challenge, you know, of, of coming to consensus when we're thinking about ARPA, you know, investments back into our community. And so I think for that reason, I, I would tend to lean towards scenario one with the idea that I really, I appreciated councilmember Payne Donovan's, you know, carve out around thinking about how we are supporting folks in our community who really even at, even at the lower end of these increases, you know, are going to have real impact, you know, in, in their ability to, you know, to, to absorb those costs. You know, and so I think thinking about relief and, and I think to councilmember Sonmore's point, I think that is a conversation that, you know, would love to work with city staff and we, I think we could do that after tonight, assuming that we had the funds to do it. You know, and I think this is a way that, that I appreciate that, you know, the idea of relief is something that not, doesn't just impact folks in our community who are property owners, but, you know, renters in our community as well who are paying utility fees could, could benefit from that. And so I, I think we don't have a, we don't have a, a motion on the table that reflects, I guess, that, that thought process. And, and maybe we, we should move that direction to have more conversation there and look at an amendment. But I think those are my, my general thoughts is I think clarity and simplicity as much as possible, I, I think, to, to Mayor Potem. as possible, I, I think, to Mayor Protemwell's point, is going to be really important. I, I think the, there is, you know, we've had these conversations. I think there is agreement among kind of all of us that this is very important. It is important for our community to be able to take a look at the, the options that are before us and to be able to, to make a decision that, that is in the best interest of our community as a whole. And I think the easier we can make that messaging, the more likely we are to, to be able to move forward in a way that is, is positive for our community. So, I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been relatively quiet through these five meetings, but that's because I've been on the RFA committee, and I just want to be as clear as possible how humbling and honorable that was to serve on that committee to get us to this point in the conversation. I'm very happy to hear that we've moved fairly smoothly to this point, and that what we're held up on is how do we make sure that we compensate, for lack of a better word, our residents who are going to go through this process one way or the other? So, in that regard, I just wanted to bring up one more concept out of committee, and then we had it here last time together, which was the idea, I'll use your language, of sunsetting, if we were to go, some version of Scenario Two. But I also wanted to put a little bit more clarity around why would we keep that money? And the one that I'll use is the one that I think has come up, if I've counted correctly in my last four years, about 12 times with no remedy to it, which is basically in our core, on that 56th and 236th area, let's call it what it is. If we were in an urban, more urban area, we'd say it was a crack house. I've heard it referred to politely in other ways, but let's call it what it is, a nuisance property. The city has no money, we've heard that 11 of the 12 times, to do anything about it. This seems like this would be a pathway towards doing something about this, that at least the folks in that area would agree, should have been a priority many, many moons ago. But again, as I said in our last meeting together, that we just don't have the money. You might think we do as a city, but once you get involved in the process, you realize, holy moly, we're just hanging on by shoestrings in most cases. And that's statewide, countrywide. That said, I don't want to list, to lose what Councilmember Sonmore's point was, which is the one that moved me over to talking about scenarios and sunsetting, which is this idea that, as a city, you do not have the opportunity to create revenue streams. And the interesting thing here is that this is not a creation of a revenue stream. You're already paying this. So, this isn't creating a new stream. This is making sure it doesn't just dry up, because we're diverting the way in which you add the water into this stream. So, you are still at the same scenario. We're just suggesting that if you look all the way out to the far right on the slide, that that monthly difference, if you can tell me that $32 is different than $39 a monthly, I know you're talking about at the end of the month, or at the end of the year, perhaps, but I'm suggesting that during that month, it won't be as painful to come up with that additional $7. And I realize the soundbite world is a dangerous time to say something like that. But let's be clear, you're paying 32, one way or the other, is where we're standing at this point, or potentially 49. So, we are trying to find some happy medium there, but we're also trying to recognize, you want to live in a city that you're proud of. And I know the most feedback that I get are, our roads are shameful. Not as many people talk about the nuisance properties unless they live next door to one, and we worked on that through the code, and we're now in a better place with that, with those codes. But there are still properties that are not accounted for that should be, and I'm suggesting this could be a possibility, to where we choose one of these scenarios in between one and three. We have a sunset on when that were to happen, and we have a specific, this is what it's going for, so that when we reach that, we know that's the year that we're done collecting that tax. I'm not sure why that seems so straightforward to me, other than A, B, and C must get to D, but I recognize that not everybody's even got all the alphabet, right? So, I want to kind of recognize that as well. But just to kind of recognize that, one way or the other, this is the right decision to go, which is to annex into the Fire District. The next one is, how do we do that and not push people out? And I understand that that's what this conversation is about, but I do want to go back to the wonderful idea of setting aside some money for our residents. But I also want to be clear that the 500,000 that we've given, I believe, a good percentage of that is still sitting there, which I would also remind us, somebody's got to process that, which I think our city staff has already made it clear. It won't be them, that's why it's out with VOA, which there's costs there. So, I'm just kind of reminding us that. There'll be hidden costs there versus us saying, let's identify a project that's got to start in a stop date, and then we're done with that, because that was your contribution, residents, for us doing the right thing by annexing into the Fire District. So, I appreciate whichever direction we go, as long as we put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would Councilmember Woodard yield to a question? If there were to be a, you know, a sunset clause, and this is, I think, actually, you know, the, the state does this all the time with, you know, revenue legislation, statute, what would you envision, you know, because a, a future council could come and, and change exactly this resolution, you know, with, with an updated resolution? Or do you have any thoughts on, on how you'd, you'd approach that?
I appreciate the question. We don't usually get questions, so thank you. I, my shortest answer is I don't have an answer for what a future council will do. But I would also say this council here, I don't always know what we're going to do. It's just depending on what's in front of us. Now that said, us establishing a history of why we've done what we've done, I think, makes sense. That's why I'm suggesting, in this particular case, we'd want to establish, here's been a long-term problem with many attempts to solve it that have all come up short, if have even got off the ground, so that when we reach that, that would be the end of the day, if you will, the sunset. So, that's just my way of trying to account for. I don't want something that goes in perpetuity, because the same thing can come back. Well, now we're going to raise it to 100,000. I mean, I get that. So, I, I wouldn't want to put us in that scenario, but I also don't want us to lose sight that this is a chance to do something. As I said earlier, this is a unique opportunity for us, and I hope folks see it as an opportunity. And I'm talking to our residents in this case, as opposed to, oh, another tax burden. Well, some burdens are actually opportunities, and I would suggest this is one of those, because again, you're already accounting for paying for something. And as you can see from the scenario, you, you're paying at least $30. We are doing our best to make sure you're not paying 50, but we're asking, is $30 different than $38? If that additional, in this case, $8, can bring you something that you have been wanting for generations in some cases. So, I just picked the nuisance properties, because I know that that's one that we're not ever going to be able to buy a house, but perhaps we can do something in this case.
Excuse me. So, I don't see any, anyone else? What do we do now? We have a motion on the table? And we've had a second, and now we have discussion. Do we just call for the question, or do we want to do more discussion?
There's a chance, there is an amendment on, on the table.
There is an amendment to the original motion, which was the resolution declaring an intent to do something. And the something has not been described. That's what the, the amendment was, to describe what our intent was. There was a subsequent suggestion, which if, if everybody is supportive of that suggestion, we can incorporate into the original amendment to the motion.
Councilmember Sonmore?
I don't know if she's had a minute to look at how much it would raise, have to be raised, to raise that $50,000. I'm assuming that it would be fifty, like a dollar more? Let's see, $2? I'm trying to think what the average would be to get to that $50,000. And I know you guys said tomorrow, but if we're voting on it tonight? Yeah, thank you.
I know that we have a table that we work with, where we can insert numbers. And so, I would ask Janella if she has that in front of her, and if she's able to run a calculation, what that means, reducing the 1,744,000 by 50,000, and what that equates to in an annual increase and a monthly increase, if I understood your question correctly. Okay.
So, you want me to reduce the 1,744,000 by 50,000?
Yes.
Okay, hold on.
And while we're waiting for that, would there be any discussion on that $50,000 of noting that it would be used to help our citizens? But is there a way to make it a statement that people actually know that's going to help all citizens? Maybe we could have some more dialogue on that?
Yeah.
Go ahead. We're back.
I have the answer?
Okay, great.
Okay. So, what I did was, I reduced that general fund amount of how much we would reduce the tax levy by 50,000, which would bring it down to 1,644,167. That would be 31 cents.
Real fast.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, but you said 1,644, that would be dropping at 100,000. Do you mean 1,1694?
No. If I am dropping, hold on.
1,694, 1,66.
Yeah, 1,6, okay, you're right, 1,694. I'm just looking at where the other portion would go. Hold on. Because that other 50,000 would have to go somewhere.
Just like, so just like we're reducing.
So, you would have to do, there would have to be another portion that would stay in the general fund. Oh, here. Hold on. We may discuss amongst yourselves, and then try this other calculation.
Mayor? While we're, while we're waiting, I should note, when the council makes a decision tonight, approves all three resolutions, what we'll do tomorrow is we have to fill out a form, according to the county, we have to fill out a very specific form referencing the committee members, their contact information, et cetera. Then what happens is Snohomish County Elections contacts those three individuals to prepare statements, gives them a deadline, et cetera. So, once we submit that to them, it's out of our hands. It then is between Snohomish County Elections and the pro and the con committees. So, I just wanted to highlight that for you while we're waiting for Janella.
All right. And we had, Councilmember Payne Donovan had...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really, really quickly, I think it was my intent that, you know, we agree on, on this sub-amendment, or amendment to the amendment, as, as Mayor Protem spoke to, and that this would be a, would go back in the general fund, and we can solidify the details as, you know, in consultation with staff. And, and, you know, also just want to state again that I envision this being something that all residents could apply for that is income qualified per the, the tier system that, that the LIHE program follows. Hope that answers some question.
Mayor Protem? Oh.
I was just going to point out, because I think once it goes to the press, they'll, they'll say, we're keeping some of that money. But I think if we are going to do that, we are keeping some pennies, and other cities are keeping some dollars. And so, I want to make it really clear that we are doing, if, if we choose to do that, we're doing the best we possibly can do, plus helping citizens with their needs. We're, we're, and I'm hoping that those monies will go down by just pennies and not dollars.
Well, we have to knock them back.
I have the amount?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, the amount, so for, it would be 1,694,166.67, if you want to round to the pennies, which would equate to .31767. That would be the rebate to the residents. So, that would bring them, the general property tax levy would be reduced from .9075 to .59, which would be $394.80 a month, or a year, and $32.90 a month.
So, it raises the annual about $6, and the monthly by about 51 cents.
So, it is penny?
Yes.
Councilmember Wall? Mayor Protemwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I feel it's important at this point to caution us about the need to simplify. We have, we're, we can't afford to overcomplicate this issue. The more we keep talking and dividing and setting aside and coming up with multiple numbers and et cetera, the more confusing it all gets to the voters. And the more confusing, what do voters do when they're confused on a tax issue? They vote no. We can't afford to let them be confused. We need to simplify. We need to keep it very, let's not get into monthly and annual and cents and dollars and on it. Pick a number. One annual amount that we're going to reduce their property taxes to keep it in their pocket and provide and ensure fire services are provided to our citizens. Plain and simple.
We can do that if we went to Scenario Two.
We can do that in a number of different ways and in a number of different scenarios. I'm just saying, let's keep it simple. So, if we're, so let's not talk about anything other than that $1 amount, so .1, .3176, whatever. We can, that's, that's the intent of what we want to do. We want to reduce that amount by that, whatever the, the, you, you, as long as you understand the intent of what we want to do, let's just keep it simple. That's what we want to do. Let's pass that and send the message that this is an important decision for our citizens, our residents to make about how they're going to, let's keep it focused on the fire, providing fire services.
So, so what I'm hearing is if that is a number you want to accept, you want to keep it just plain and simple. For example, 1,694,000. For example, 1,694,000, et cetera, and here's the rate, .317
Right.
Per, per thousand.
Right.
For the explanatory statement. That's what I'm hearing from Councilmember Wall, is that correct?
Correct.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of clarification, I appreciate the, your, your desire to, and, and agree with your, with the need to keep this as simple as possible. Mayor Protam Wall, are you agreeing with the, the set aside, the $50,000 set aside that I'm proposing?
Incorporating that into the number that we're suggesting.
Understood, just wanted to, to clarify.
So if you change that number from 1,744 to 1,694?
Right.
Then we would have that in the general fund.
So, Janella, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard you say is 1,694,166.67? Or you can even just round, just leave it at one?
If you round it, it's, if you take 50,000 off of that 1,744,166, it's 1,694,166.
Yep. And then the, the rate per thousand is .31767, essentially pretty close to .32?
Yeah.
Or you could, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure that I've heard those numbers correctly, so that if a council member makes a motion and wishes to reference those amounts, they know exactly what they are.
Yes.
Thank you.
So are we going to redo this motion? We, we have a motion and you've amended part of it.
Now we need an amendment to the amendment. Yeah. Or accepted, or, right, or accepted as a friendly amendment. All accepted as a friendly amendment. Understood? Does that make sense? So we're...
No, you gotta say it all.
Yeah. So the, the numbers that I just referenced, I will insert those into the resolution that you're going to adopt this evening.
Okay. So I, I will restate the amendment for, as friendly amended.
Thank you.
All right. So, Section 2, "In the event that the proposition to have the city annexed into South County Fire is approved by the voters in the April 25, 2023 special election, the city will reduce the general property tax levy by .317 per thousand of assessed value in the, in 2024." Is that?
.317 is what I heard?
Yeah. Plus or minus, whatever the, whatever the assess, the... Is that, and is that the format that you needed it, or do you need us to change that format?
Well, my concern is if you...
I wouldn't...
I think we're going, we're going to say the same thing. Go ahead, Janella.
I would just keep the doll, the million in there and not have .317 per thousand, because every year that assessed value is going to change.
Okay.
And that .31767 will mean, mean something different.
And that's fine. Again, that's, you know, that was referenced earlier in the slide presentation as to the .0 whatever, 33 cents. So I'm, I'm happy to make that change, so that it would read, "The City Council will reduce the general property tax levy by 1,694,166 dollars in 2024, back to the residents." How's that? Did I get you where you need us to be?
Yes. And in the question and answer, which we will post to the website, we will reference what that equates to in 2003. In other words, that would be the .31767.
Very good.
2023.
So it, it will be referenced, and it'll be referenced on the website.
Okay.
Is that what we're going to vote on?
Second.
At this point, that is what is on the table to vote on, yes.
Did we hear, was there a second to that? Okay, so there's been a, okay, so now.
If, unless there's further discussion.
Further discussion.
We're voting on, just to clarify, we're voting on the amendment to the original motion.
Okay, so we're just voting on the amendment. So if there aren't any, any more discussion on that, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So that motion carries. And now we go back to the...
So the original motion, as, as amended, sorry, get my eyes. All right, so the original motion is to reduce the portion of the general property tax levy used to pay fire and emergency medical services in 2024 and eliminate the EMS levy in 2024, should a majority of voters approve annexation into the South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority in April 2020, April 25, 2023 special election, as amended.
Okay. So.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on that, or you want to just go, call for the? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? So motion carries. I see a lot of our fire people out there smiling.
Oh, yes, right, we're not done yet.
Yes, we have the last. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve, or appoint, I guess we're appointing, thank you, Ned Daniels, Tammy Rice, and Dave Johnson to the pro committee, and Isaac Harrison to the con committee.
Second.
Second.
Do we have discussion on that, or should we just go for the vote? I don't see anyone wanting to talk, so let's just vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So that carries.
Thank you.
So we, we have a pro and con committee now.
Did we need to specify the spokesperson, or is that on the record, or is that already indicated?
It's, looks like there's a spokesperson here.
Perfect.
When Snohomish County Elections reaches out to the committee members, he or she will ask them which person will serve as the chair.
As long as we don't need to put anything on the record, terrifying, that's good.
It says. Okay. All right, go team. Okay, so then we can move on to the next item. Oh, let's see. Oh, city, city managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm very pleased to announce that after a lengthy selection process, an events coordinator was selected and will start in March the 1st. As you recall, this is a new position in the 2023 budget, and this along with the communications manager position is intended to allow there to be focus on improved communications and emphasis on special events for the benefit of the city. And so Andrew Applewick, who has been with Recreation and Parks for a number of years, and has previously worked for the City of Seattle on promotion of events, successfully competed, competed for the position, and so he will be starting, as I mentioned, in, with his new position in about a week. So it would be my intent to bring him forward and introduce him to the council, as I said I would with the communications manager in the next short period of time, so I'm very pleased to announce that. Secondly, just a reminder that there is a transportation connection corridor update project on the trail design and the amenities for Veterans Memorial Park, and that's on the 23rd of this month, which is a few days from now, 7:00 PM at City Hall, with consultants presenting different options in that public meeting, and so we're excited to be doing that. And then lastly, a reminder as well that the City Council has endorsed the selection process for the, the next city manager to take place next Friday and Saturday, which would be the 3rd and 4th of, of March. And so we plan to post and publicize the names of the five finalists tomorrow, and invite the community to join the city in a meet and greet, public reception on the evening of Friday, March 3, here in City Hall. An opportunity to meet and to hear the candidates, and the candidates will be, will go through a process of meeting with three different panels, one of, of staff managers, one of employees, and one of community stakeholders representing various community groups, including our boards and commissions, and so we'll be putting out those invitations within the next day or two, to make sure that we have the panels up and running for a full day on Friday, March 3, leading to, of course, the council's interview with each of the candidates on Saturday, March 4. And that, Mayor Murray, that, Mayor and council, that would conclude my briefing, unless you have questions for me.
Now, the, the Friday night reception, what time would that be?
We're right now looking at 6:30 to 8, thereabouts. We're wanting to make sure that the, the previous activities are able to be concluded, so we're, we're, we're fine tuning the dates, excuse me, the times and the dates, but for, for right now, I would say between 6:30 and 8 is what we're looking at.
Okay. And that will be at the senior center?
I'm sorry.
That will be at the senior center?
No, that will be here.
Oh, here?
We will open up the doors, it'll be in the lobby and in the chambers, and we'll provide for an opportunity to mix and mingle, and each candidate, each of the five, will be asked to do a brief introduction to the, to the, to the community, in terms of introductory comments, here at City Hall.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. Just really quickly, I guess question development, as we're getting towards interviews, just given kind of our short timeline, is, I guess, are we collaborating for kind of the group interview part, or I guess, when are we, when, when does that happen?
Good question, thank you. It is my intent to circulate shortly some suggested sample questions, so that each of you can weigh in with me on a set of questions, as you've done before, and then give you a final set that is essentially is your set of questions for you to use on that Saturday. This will be different than the council member interviews that you did a few weeks ago, because this will, these interviews will be an executive session, and so we will not be publicizing the questions ahead of time.
Thank you. Council, uh, Mayor Protam Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On that note, actually, that reminds me, can we make sure that we have the questions that we're going to ask as a council, provided to us to review prior to our one-on-ones?
Very definitely. It is my intent to, to circulate the suggested questions within the next couple of days, which is, and of course, the, the one-on-ones would be a week later on, on, on March the 3. Keeping in mind, of course, that the one-on-ones are, are looking like fairly short 20-minute meetings, whereas the, the interviews themselves are like 50 or 55-minute time slots, so you have more time to cover. And of course, in the one-on-ones, council members have more flexibility to, within limits, of course, to ask whatever questions you want. But yes, you'll, if, if your question is about the timeframe, the suggested questions will be going out within the next day or so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and, and thank you. I, I, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, and, you know, as, as you go through the process, I just want to make sure that I have the finalized version of what the council will be asking each candidate during the Saturday session before, so that I, because as you point out, I, I have all the flexibility in the world, my little 20-minute segment, right? But I don't, there's no reason for me to ask the same questions that are already going to be asked by the council as a whole, so I want to make sure that I'm able to focus on the questions that aren't being asked during the Saturday session.
I think I do understand, and certainly each of you, during the one-on-ones, will have the opportunity to ask questions as you see fit, which would meet your own priorities in terms of what's important to you. It would be my intent with the questions for the full council to, again, have all of you review the questions, and then to have the questions reflect what your priorities are, but to do it in a way that there will be suggestions as to who would ask which question and, and that kind of process.
Very good, thank you.
You have, Councilmember Salmer?
On Saturday, did you say that schedule's still in work? Or do we know what time?
We're looking at roughly a 9 o'clock start time, and with the five interviews, it would be roughly about 2 o'clock or 2:30 with conclusion, of course, there's a little bit of a lunch break in there with an executive session to follow, so the, the whole day is looking like roughly about 9 to 3, give or take. Yeah, or maybe 9 to 4, depending on how the executive session goes. Did I see a few faces that indicated 9 o'clock was not a good time? No, I didn't see...
Only for those who are night hours. I can do 7, but...
We, we will have coffee and other refreshments to keep people awake, or to wake people up, as the case may be, so.
Grand pair will be open by then.
Any other questions about that?
Anyone else? No, 9 o'clock is fine, I think all the others started at 9.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, it will be council liaison reports, and so I'll just start, I'll just start over there with Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, going back to February 9, I had the pleasure to go to our local Cub Scout PAC 76. They had their blue and gold banquet, and I had a chance to, to visit with them and talk to them a little bit about what we do here and the importance of civic engagement, which is one of my favorite things, so I appreciated the opportunity and the invitation to come and join them. Let's see, on the 15th and the 16th last week, I went to the Association of Washington Cities City Action Days down in Olympia. I, I think there's lots of folks that are going to mention that, so given kind of time, I will keep it fairly brief, but it was an opportunity for those in our community, it was an opportunity to go down, to meet with our representatives, to talk about our priorities as a community, so we talked a lot about Main Street Phase 2 and the importance of moving that project forward. We had a lot of learning opportunities, there was a really good session that kicked off the, the two days of learning around promoting equity in city legislative priorities, that had some good takeaways that I'm excited to share with our DEIC and city staff, lots of good conversations around advocacy and housing and community engagement and all sorts of good things, and lots of good opportunity to just connect with other folks, I think that's one of the things that has been challenging the last couple of years, is just the opportunity to have real conversations with elected leaders in other communities around what they are doing, and so had good conversations with folks who are also in the Edmonds School District around what they're doing and engaging youth. Lynwood has some really great things going on, you know, as do lots of other communities across the region, so it was, I think, time well spent and appreciated the opportunity. And then the next day, so last Friday, had the opportunity, we had Representative Del Bene here in Mount Lake Terrace to take a tour of all of the wonderful things that are going on, as she gets familiarized with, with representing our community here, with, with redistricting here this last year, and so that was wonderful to have her, it was wonderful to, to see folks in our community, again, come out and get to share, share some of the, the things that they really love about the community and the work that we're doing. about the community and the work that we're doing. And then there was a DEIC meeting last week. I did not have a chance to attend that because we were down in Olympia, but I will note, as I say, Chair Page and myself will be meeting at some point here this week. But I think the, the highlight that I would just mention that is helpful from a timeliness perspective is we are moving forward with the budgetary allocation that we put in the budget to support strategic planning around diversity, equity, and inclusion. A request for proposal went out for a consultant or an organization who wants to partner with us on that work. And so the deadline for that is, it closes Monday, March 6th at 5:00 PM. So I'm sure we would appreciate, folks, if you are interested, taking a look, there's information up on the city website. And I think that that is, that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Did not see that coming. Thank you, Mayor. I thought he was going to come down the line. So I'll go one further back than Councilmember Murray and start at the 8th and just say that, once again, what an honor it was, and thank you to this council for voting me on to the RFA Subcommittee. It was genuinely an honor. It seems like we were at it for a long time, although perhaps for folks signing in, it might seem like we only talked about it here, but we had a lot of Subcommittee conversations, both with South County Fire as well with their commissioners. So just thank you all for helping us through this very important discussion and ultimately decision. I'm glad that we have reached the decision to put this on the ballot. Moving on to the 9th, the 9th was an awesome day to engage in civic engagement. I was actually invited to speak to Edmonds College's Bachelor of Applied Science, their Leadership in Child, Youth, and Family Studies. Technically, I can tell if it was a panel, because I was the only person on it, so I guess it was technically a spotlight, but it was about an hour conversation of them asking me very vulnerable questions about leadership, which, at the end of it all, I summarized it with the same one I will do with this council, which is trust. When I look at leadership, both personally as well as folks who I admire, it all boils down to trust. And, and just what an honor it has been to know that the seven of us have this city's trust, that we're out here trying to make sure that we're making great decisions. And more importantly, when we may not get to that point of making great decision, we have awesome folks who care about this community as much, if not more, than we do, come and remind us. And sometimes it's something as subtle as intend to versus will. Thank you for that catch. That's absolutely needed to be in there. I think that council has been very clear that we were giving as much money back as we possibly can, keeping in mind the city still has its needs. I'll move a little bit further to get to something a little more fun. Saturday, the 11th, I invited you all to come out for some cornhole lessons. No one joined me, that's okay. You have another chance this upcoming Saturday. Hey, now, I'll take it easy on you. That said, we did have our city staff there, and they made it a family affair, so we actually did get a chance to play a different team, my spouse and I, and it was a lot of fun. Any age, any ability, and there's music. I mean, come on. And it wasn't raining on us, because it's indoors. Moving forward, on the 13th, I had the opportunity to join Representative Larson, who, as we know, is no longer representing us, but is still doing amazing work here in the district. And I bring that up mostly to remind us, he was there for the LNC, and as we were talking about ARPA dollars and decisions to be made and us recognizing, I'm going to add this new concept in there, which is that our issues do not stop at our borders. Just a reminder that that is a resource that's still coming our way to this city and something to look forward to. On the 14th, I participated in Economic Alliance Snohomish County's Coffee Chat, another great conversation. I'll just leave it there, you can get the recordings if you're interested. On the 15th and 16th, I had the honor of joining six, well, five of us, myself being the sixth, I didn't join myself, down at the AWC Action Days. And I will just say, you know, I've been on this council thankfully four years now. That was my first opportunity to join. The first year I chose not to go, the next two were not an option because we were in COVID status, so to be able to join this time was truly humbling, just to meet all the, not all, but a grand percentage of other folks having to make these same type of tough decisions for their cities and their towns. It was just an amazing experience. I walked away with some folks wanting to write some articles with me, walked away with folks who want to mentor me, because this is not an easy role to be in, and I want to acknowledge that. So thank you for all of you also being great colleagues when we were down there. Nothing worse than getting down there and your own colleagues won't talk to you. That wasn't the case at all. We couldn't get, get enough of each other. If anything, we should have sat at other tables, met more people, but it was still absolutely amazing and well-said Action Days. On the 16th, I joined us for our study session. On the 17th, I too was able to make it to our new representative to us, well, technically not new to us, but now fully in charge of our area, Representative Del Bene. Appreciate it, her, just in general. And then yesterday, unless today is Monday, today is Monday, so actually today, it's been a long day, I had the oppor, couldn't have been today. No, today's Tuesday. Thank goodness, I was like, what is going on? Was that today, too? Yesterday, I had it right the first time, I had the opportunity, it was online, but to sit through the African-American Legislative Day, which has been something that's been going on for a long time. It was mostly the Seattle and further South County folks, but they still made room for those of us up here in the North County, and it was just a wonderful conversation. The governor made his way through, as he did with Action Days, and then there's a number of representatives from the Senate as well as the House reminding us of the bills that they too are working on and pushing through the system on our behalf. And then I will just end it with a reminder, cornhole Saturday, but if that's not your style, you can come earlier, and Ivy League is meeting again earlier that day from 9:00 to 12:00. So we always welcome anybody to come and join Ivy League, but the hope is to go from Ivy League over to cornhole lessons. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, the 14th, I attended the Left One Retirement Board. On the 16th, I was here at our study-work session. And today, I was at the Arts Commission meeting, nothing new to report. They're, well, they're, they are working to do a presentation for council coming up in, I believe, March. And I am here now, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salmore.
Thank you. I'll start out with my liaison report on February 14th. I did miss the Left One due to getting ready for Olympia, but I did sign the paperwork. And then later on that evening, I did join the RPAC meeting as a representative, taking over for former council member Doug McCardle, and Ken Courtmatch oversees RPAC, but Laura Reed was there talking about the trees and how fast we're losing trees in our city. And so I just want to bring up again, Trees for Terrace, they're accepting applications to give away trees, and the street value of these trees is $175 to $300. And so I think there's different trees, I think there's five different trees you can choose from, but you have to agree to water it, and the average cost of watering it per week is 22 cents, and it comes with a free watering bag and mulch to provide with your trees. So we want to encourage people to do that as much as possible. And then on February 14th and 15th, I also attended the Washington, or Association of Washington Cities City Action Days, and so we met in Olympia, and I did attend some of the advocacy and roundtable meetings, and we did lobby with Senator Solomon, which probably is not a good time to lobby during that week, and we've kind of known that. So if we can do that like a month prior, that would be more beneficial. The poor man had to eat a soup and talk at the same time. And so we appreciated all the time that he did allow us to have with him, because we knew he was extremely busy. And then for the 23, 2023 city legislation priorities that were mainly focused on, a lot of the time during this, this couple of days was the response to the Blake Decision, address vehicle pursuits for public safety, ensure public infrastructure funding, increase housing availability and affordability, and then provide behavioral health resources. So those are the big hitters along with everything else, but that's a lot of what we focused on during those two days. And then next, also being on the RFA Committee that you just heard Councilman Woodard speak about, it was an honor to be on that committee again, but I also want to extend my deepest gratitude to Assistant Chief Eastman and Leslie Hind, the Public Information Officer, who has always been there to support us, prolong not going to other meetings, maybe retirement, maybe other things, but you are very deeply appreciated by this city, and please know that, that we just respect you. I just can't say enough about both of you. You're just absolutely wonderful human beings. But I also have to thank, too, is Stephen and Janella and our city manager for their dedication to this project, because without them, our city would not be in the shape it is, and, and postponing retirement as well. Again, as people are dedicated to our city, I know we appreciate you more than we say, but please know that the little things you do don't go unnoticed. And I know our city manager had to jump right in the middle of this, and Janella, we were pumping out questions on different scenarios, and, and thank you for having those Excel spreadsheets there, because that was extremely important to us. And then I see Mr. Daniels from the Fire District 2 being here, and thank you for all your support to our, for our city. We really appreciate that very, very much. And with that, that's all I have to report, but please accept our gratitude for everything that you do.
Okay, thank you. We have our report from our brand-new council member, Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This will be brief, and it's largely been covered by everyone else, but I'll, I'll work in, in reverse. I believe it was this last Friday, had a chance to, prior to meeting with Representative Susan Del Bene, briefly tour the Firehouse 19 with Chief Hovis, and really appreciated that opportunity. Then followed by the, the tour and reception with the Congresswoman. The week before that, we heard about the AWC Lobby Days. That was, it was a lot of fun for me as, as a former legislative staffer who, you know, ashamed to say, 10 years ago was being, you know, facilitating the same capital budget requests at much lower dollar figures back then, and I think it's, it's just, goes to show, you know, the, the grind that this work can be for cities of this size to, to secure the funds that, that are needed for our priorities. And really enjoyed being down in Olympia with, with most of you and, and seeing the AWC statewide family convene and discuss and, and mingle. Prior to that, it's, it's a rather short list, because you all appointed me at the beginning of this, this month, so I will stop short there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pretem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so let's see, February 9th, Snohomish County Cities Executive Board meeting. We discussed meetings and dates and topics for those meetings. We are planning on doing them quarterly. The next one, by the way, is April 20th. And, and then we'll be, every three, four months after that, we haven't set the exact dates, we'll probably, we're kind of debating whether or not to continue on the Thursday, 3rd Thursday, or mixing that up a little bit. Constantly talking about locations, whether we should stick to the one where we're getting the benefit of, by having all meetings there every year, every quarter, we're able to get a discount and a better price, if we were, and also better, usually better attendance because of the central location. But there's always the interest in going regional and learning about other cities and showing off for each of their cities, and anyway, so we're, we're working our way through all of that, but we've got some exciting ideas and thoughts and, and overall, you know, looking at the organization and the budget and how we can be the most effective organization that we, we can with the, considering the limited resources that we have. Anyway, also joined my colleagues down in Olympia for the Association of Washington Cities Conference and City Action Days on February 15th and 16th, and some great meetings with Senator Solomon, Representatives Ryu and Davis, talking about our Main Street and the importance of finishing, getting the final funding to finish this project off once and for all. Also had a lovely fireside chat with Governor Inslee. I thought that was fantastic. Then February 17th, had, oh, I'm sorry, we had the work session. We scrambled back from Olympia to be able to make it up for our work session on Thursday night. And then the following day, had the honor of welcoming Congresswoman Susan Del Beni to Mount Lake Terrace. Had the honor of being able to join on the tour and share with her all the different projects that we've been working on here in Mount Lake Terrace. Prior to the reception, it was her birthday, also enjoyed celebrating her birthday here in Mount Lake Terrace. Do want to really, you know, we've, we're talking about how much we appreciate staff and, and all the different players and people that are involved in, in our community, I really want to, specifically on these, the welcome tour for the Congresswoman, I really want to thank, you know, everybody that really made that come together. Jennifer and Ricky really, really did some heavy lifting, we really appreciate it. And, and the rest of the, you know, our Assistant Man, City Manager, our City Manager, and our Parks and Recreation Director, there were a lot of different people that really make, helped make that come together, but it was a very, very successful tour and a welcome reception for the Congresswoman. I think she had some great insight into what progress we've been making over the years and all the exciting projects we've had, and how, and the role that federal dollars has played in helping all of those projects come together, and, and I think she's looking forward to joining in and helping out, continuing that help, bringing some of that, those federal dollars home to here in Mount Lake Terrace. I think that concludes my report, I will end it there. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. My report goes all the way back to the 24th of January, because I missed the meeting. And that will be on the 24th, or on the 21st, I attended the Edmonds Lunar New Year Celebration, and I really look forward to someday in the future, we'll have one in Mount Lake Terrace. On the 24th, I attended the Real Estate Summit that, it was supposed to be a HARP meeting that day, but they, they canceled the HARP meeting, and we went to this Real Estate Summit, which is very, very, it was, it was great. It was well-attended, and I think that everyone got a, a different insight in the problems with housing today. And then on the 25th, I met with the Congresswoman Del Bene's staff, along with Andrew, to get to know each other. That, later that day, I attended the AHA meeting, the Housing Affordable, Affordable, the Affordable Housing Alliance. And, and then the, on the 30th, I attended the Snohomish County Executive and Mayor Meeting on the, and then we had the council candidate interviews, and the next day, on the 31st, we had more council candidate interviews, and we have our new one right here. And then on the 2nd, I attended the Snohomish County Mayor's Meeting, and that's all of, all of Snohomish County. And then on the 3rd of February, I attended the Seashore Transportation Forum, which they focused on Linwood Link on that one, so that was really, really informative and interesting. On the 13th, I attended the reception for Congressman Larson at our, with the VOA for the new Linwood Neighborhood Center. And on the 16th, 15th and 16th, I attended the AWC City Action Days in Olympia, and it was really, really wonderful to be in person again. And you can see how much more you, you get out of a convention or a conference when you're in person and not on Zoom. And then on the, on Friday, the 17th, we welcomed Congresswoman Del Bene, and I think she really, really enjoyed seeing what our city has done. We actually use federal dollars, we actually use, you know, we received the dollars, we actually used it, and we had Congressman Inslee at that time. actually used it and we had Congressman Inslee at that time give us the $2 million for our Lakeview Trail and then Congressman Larson giving, helping us with all these projects and then now she's going to be helping us. And that is the end of my report. Okay, so next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let's congratulate Councilmember Donovan Payne, who's got a name up on the board there now. Congrats, I saw that last time. Use that to parlay to say at the end of this, if we could do a group photo, that would be awesome, so we can get you on the webpage and they'll know what you look like. Yep.
I think that, that's a professional photo.
Yeah.
We can, we can do something. I was going to ask about that because we need to have a headshot too that matches.
I didn't sign up for that.
Well, we all have to look good on the website. So new business, anyone else? I met, I met with a gentleman who works for Workforce, helping the veterans and so I met with him today and we have VASH vouchers for homeless veterans to get housing, but there's a real need in, and helping out in utilities is one thing because you can't get a VASH voucher if you already own a home, but because of problems with a lot of different things with veterans, they, they own a home, but they can't pay for it. And so if we can figure out a way to help them with utilities or whatever, anything, anything will help. So, and, and Workforce is helping the veterans find work and they just, we don't, I didn't even know that we didn't have our workforce in Mount Lake Terrace anymore. They closed it down. It's, it's been closing and now they're going to close down a bunch of others in South County and it's only going to be in Everett. So I'd like to, you know, we can't help everybody, but we can sure, you know, try because a lot of the veterans are in our parks over here. You know, they, they have PTSD and all kinds of medical problems. So anyways, it's just something that I just wanted to just bring up that, that we can be aware of. And that is the end of what I have. Anyone else? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible]